Really? Technology loves me. Good lord. Okay, well, it looks like we don't have cameras or YouTube for right now, but we'll get there. But we can start the meeting and we'll just do it with sharing screens.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Land and Planning Commission order and invite you to stand for a flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Kelly, if you could call a roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Mike Miller. Congratulations on your first meeting. Commissioners Malloy, Engelford,
Yeah.
Fountain, Baxter, Breschers, and McLean is absent. Vice Chair Garek Kunarowski and Chair Robertson.
Here. Okay, we have, and I'll echo what Kelly said. Mike, glad to have you aboard. Hope it's not a rocky road, but we'll see. But anyway, thanks for being here. Thanks for applying. We have a whole bunch of minutes to approve. So let's take them one at a time. The meeting minutes for March 15th. Any additions or corrections? Okay, hearing none, then those minutes will stand approved as presented. Moving on to the second one for April 19th. Any additions, corrections? Okay, hearing none, then those will stand approved as presented. April 26, 2023 minutes. Any additions or corrections? I have one. The date at the top of page one is inaccurate.
The six, the 26th?
Yep. The date on the page is April 18, or I mean, January 18th.
Gotcha. Okay.
So because there is a correction, then I would need a motion to approve the minutes as corrected. Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then May 17th. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, then that one will stand approved as presented. And then finally, the Historic Landmark Commission, May 17th, 2023. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, those stand approved as presented. Okay? So we come to a point in our agenda that invites anybody with us this evening that wishes to address the Planning Commission on an item that is not on our agenda, then we would invite you to come forward, sign in, state your name, please. Okay, seeing no movement, we'll move on to our public hearings. We've got three public hearings tonight. We have a subdivision and two annexations. And before we get into that, I'll toss it to our city attorney.
Thank you. Tonight's hearings, all three of them, will be pursuant to the quasi judicial hearing procedures set forth in 197, 763 Oregon laws. At the commencement of the hearing, all commissioner members will be asked to announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest. If you have any questions about what either of those are, please let me know. The hearing will start out with the staff report. After the staff report, a lot of questions of staff by commission. We will then have public testimony in the format provided in the notice. The testimony from audience members or anyone online may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. Please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria that is described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Note that failure to raise an issue, including a constitutional issue or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues, precludes any appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba shall be raised not later than the close of the record at or following this evidentiary hearing. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city decision makers and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond. If you give public testimony, please state your name and address before you testify. We'll start with the public testimony. We'll start with the applicant and then any supporters of the, of the application, then any opposition to the application, and finally rebuttal if necessary to the applicant. With that, you may open the meeting and ask for ex parte or conflicts of interest.
Okay, thank you. So we'll open public hearing S-22-04, a two-track, 48-lot subdivision, and ask if there's any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias.
Kelly, is it the next meeting that I'm doing a presentation on that?
September.
September. So I'll be giving a riveting presentation on ex parte and, and conflicts of interest at the September meeting. So please put that on your calendar and be here.
Okay. Can't wait.
Yep, yep.
So, no disclosures, so we'll toss it to the staff for a staff report.
Okay, one bit of housekeeping before I do start. After having to listen through many minutes to write them out, because I was a bit behind, I beg and plead all commissioners to please make sure that your microphones are on and also speak within, you know, four to six inches of the microphone, or I'm going to be leaning into my computer so far to try and put my head into it to hear what's going on for the minute. So I would really please pay attention to that, and I would thank you greatly. Red light's on.
On.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you. Before you tonight, for our first item is a proposed subdivision, S-22-04. The property is kind of located on the western side of the end of existing subdivision with Mazama and Fuji Lane streets deadedding into it. And then to the south of it is generally Vaughn Lane and to the west of it is Stoltz Hill Road. The zoning for the property is residential mixed density. And then surrounding the properties to the northwest and south are a mix of properties that are within the county and within city limits with the designation of residential mixed density under our comprehensive plan and zoning code. And it's a mix of large acre lots with single-family homes or agricultural uses on it. And then to the east is a single-family home subdivision that has been previously built, obviously. And then there are public facilities that are available within that subdivision that are proposed to be pulled to and throughout the subdivision to service the area. This is the proposed subdivision. It is for a 48-lot, three-tracked subdivision. I believe I had a misspeak in the staff report that identified it as two tracks. The three tracks include a portion of site that is on the northern end that's unbuildable. The tract for the storm drainage detention and then the remainder of the parcel that is going to be undeveloped will be identified as a tract associated with the subdivision. As you can see, it's a 22-acre site, but it is not all proposed to be developed. And as laid out in the staff report, that's because there's quite a bit of development constraints for the subdivision. To go through it, you have a BPA power line easement that runs diagonally through the property here. And that's a 100-foot easement. That's a non-build area. You also have a city easement that's a 50-foot wide easement that travels from Stoltz Hill Road and then into the subdivision, and the street sort of follows the line of that 50-foot wide easement. And that is for our West Side Sewer Project, for the West Side Interceptor. There's also a water line easement that runs through Mazama Avenue and then cuts across to service water and fire service for the parcels located on the screen to the north of the project. And that's also a non-build area, so you'll see that Mazama is designed to follow the path of that easement as well. So those easements identify the constraints of where areas can be built and why the streets are designed the way that they are. You also have additional development constraints in terms of our overlay zones and protection areas. So you have the riparian protection area, which you have Oak Creek that basically runs right along the property boundary line of the property. And within our development code, Oak Creek from top of bank, 50 feet on either side, is a riparian protection area. That's a no-build, preserve the natural area in place. You also have the airport overlay. That does not provide a development constraint, but it does identify that an airport permit through the Oregon Department of Aviation may be required for the construction and some additional signaling or lighting might be required as part of the subdivision. You also have a portion of the property that is within the floodplain. And so you can see, and as identified in the staff report, along this southern portion, oh, goodness gracious, sorry, back there. Along the southern portion of the site, you have a number of properties that are within the designated floodplain here. We have called out those properties as being within the floodplain. And prior to any construction activity, if the subdivision were to be approved, a floodplain permit would be required through the city to ensure that the property is developed in a manner to protect it, to meet the standards, to be able to get floodplain insurance. And then you also have a large number of wetlands on the property. And so those wetlands are largely attempting to be preserved in place. That is why you have the tract A over here is a large wetland area. And then obviously along Oak Creek and in this sort of hatched mark in the tract is a large wetland area. There are portions of wetlands that fall into the property, and there's some along the northern portion in Mazama that are proposed to be mitigated. A delineation has been provided for the wetlands to identify how much is proposed to be mitigated, and a permit would be required through the Department of State Lands and the Army Corps of Engineers to be able to remove those wetlands prior to any construction. So with all of those site constraints, you get down to where we sit today, which is the proposal for 48 residential lots. The vast majority of the lots are approximately 5,000 square feet in size and approximately 50 feet or more in width, meeting the minimum lot standards for a traditional single-family home or a duplex lot. There are some lots that far exceed that lot area requirement, and those lots are clustered around the BPA easement area because a large portion of that lot area is undevelopable. So although a large portion counts towards the ability to possibly build a larger development type, like an apartment, because of the site restriction, that's not a likelihood based off of the actual developable areas. For access and traffic, the proposal is to pull from the existing street infrastructure, which is how it has been planned. They currently dead-end and have the three-tiered barrier, which is intended for further expansion versus a cul-de-sac, which is a closed street unit. And so the proposal is to extend both Mazama and Fuji Lane into the subdivision and then turn into a north-south street, which would dead-end to the southern portion of the property. There is private property between the proposal area and Vaughn Lane, so it doesn't connect to Vaughn, but it is designed in a manner where it could in the future if that property owner decided to develop as well. Due to fire code requirements, there is a secondary access requirement to make sure that if there is a fire in the area, that people can get out. Mazama and Fuji Lane separation does not meet that requirement as it sits. And so there is a proposal to put together a fire access lane towards the southern end of the development, which would skirt around the western border and then out towards Stoltz Hill Road. In terms of traffic, we did have Kittleson and Associates review it and put together a traffic letter, which basically identified that it is building into an existing street system that was designed for it to be expanded into and that there is no off-site mitigation, such as additional stoplights or traffic stop signs or anything like that, that would be required. As part of the traffic letter, the only stop sign that is proposed would be at the terminus of Fuji Lane and the new north-south street. Utilities are also proposed to be pulled through the street system for extension of mains, and then laterals would be provided as well. So that provides a general layout of everything in the city's utilities and traffic and access. We do have, stipulated in the staff reports, some anomalies in terms of the proposed lots when there's flag lots, as described, how those access are proposed as a joint access easement. And as part of the public comment period, we did receive one email from Build Lebanon Trails that identifies that there is a planned trail as part of the Trail Master Plan that would run along Stoltz Hill Road and then turn towards the east to try to connect into Columbus Park, right? Christopher Columbus Park. And so that was the one public comment that we received formally for this project to date. So with that, I'm happy to conclude my report and answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I'm a little bit curious about this fire access road thing. Can you, I mean, is it, is it single lane, gravel, paved? What's, what's, what's the plan there?
So the, the final design of it is going to be stipulated through the conditions of approval and review by the fire district. It's a minimum of a 20-foot lane, and it needs to be hard-packed surface so that a fire truck can travel on it beyond those minimum standards. The fire district will stipulate if it needs to be anything beyond a hard-packed gravel.
Is this going to be like a regular public street, or is this strictly, okay, so it's going to have one of those little lock post things to prevent regular traffic?
Correct. It truly is just emergency access and secondary access for, for emergency purposes. So there will be bollards placed at the, the entry point between the street and the fire access that the fire department would be able to remove with a Knox key.
Okay. So that could actually potentially incorporate into the trail system to provide access?
Would not be a formal trail or maintained as a public trail. But public goes where access lies.
Right. Could this become a new hangout for certain people in the, in the area?
I, I think, right, right now, the site is how it is. Growth and development occurs, and the police department will respond as appropriate.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions? I have several of them, but I think I'll hold on to a little bit. They may be covered. So if there's no other questions, then we'll open the public hearing. By the applicant or applicant's representative, if you come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Laura LaRocque. I am the applicant's representative. I work with UDL Engineering and Land Surveying. Property address is in the application. As always, Kelly does a great job giving an overview. I don't have too many things to add, so I'll just hit on the high points instead of repeating that information. So as you're aware, it's, it's a subdivision proposal. You had a question about fire access to the site. A lot of fire code comes right, straight from the Oregon Fire Code. Essentially, it states that anytime you develop more than 30 dwelling units, that you do need a secondary access. How secondary access is determined is kind of a numeric process. You take the property site, you draw a diagonal line from the furthest point to furthest point, and it says it can't be any more than 400 feet. So it really establishes within the site how that secondary access comes in. So on this particular one, it wouldn't be appropriate to add any other fire access in the place that it's located, based on that diagonal distance. Oregon Fire Code says that you do need a travel lane for a fire apparatus, about 12 feet in width, I believe, and then you need an overall easement width of 20. That allows them to unmount their fire ladders and kind of spread out their truck equipment within an easement area. An easement is just that. It's private property with a right for somebody else to use the land. So when you talk about informal or formal use of a trail system, that right would have to be granted by the property owner. And because it does retain in a track, whoever retains kind of ownership of that track in the future would have the ability to trespass anybody that would go on private property. Otherwise, the street system is kind of already defined, so there is an extension of two existing local streets to serve the site. As Kelly mentioned, there's a north-south accessway that's proposed to be extended in the future as property to the south of the subdivision further develops. If and when that happens, it would add another connection at Vaughn. Within the application, there is a transportation study. The transportation study takes a look at the two new street connections. It looks right at the intersection of where those would, about the subdivision, and also looks at intersections within the general area. And it makes sure that the traffic that's anticipated to be generated from this site does not exceed what could function at these intersections within the town. So how they estimate traffic is they take a look at the number of lots. What's the potential full buildout of the site? There's a metric within an institutional engineering book that says X amount of trips per this type of dwelling. On this case, they anticipate, and the traffic study was actually, I should say, based off more lots than what's actually proposed now. So the traffic study takes a look at what could be developed on 53 lots. So what's proposed is slightly less when you're taking a look at this traffic study. But they estimate about 500 total trips. How those are dispersed is you take a look at their peak travel times, which is kind of during your morning commute and when you're coming home from work. And those trips average about 50 at that time. So 50 trips during the busiest time of the day would be generated by the site at full buildout. And how those trips would be dispersed is between those two local streets currently and then through a third access point in the future when it's developed. Another kind of associated material document is a wetland delineation. So you'll see in your packet some materials provided by Zion. Zion actually goes to the site. They look at the features of the site and they delineate a wetland. What that means is they just draw a line around the boundary of where the wetland is. Anytime that you impact a portion of the wetland, more than 50 cubic yards, you're required to have state permit and overview for those. And often, folks have to either buy wetland mitigation credits or just not impact those wetland areas. So that really does limit the amount of development on the site. Only about half of what the site is, is proposed to be developed, and only a very small portion of the wetlands would be impacted by this. Try to avoid impacts altogether when you're doing it, because it is expensive, not only to go through the permitting process. And also, you don't want to disturb the natural functions of those areas. But in this case, how you set up the roads and to be able to meet the minimum lot sizes, there were small areas that would have to be impacted on those. So I think those are kind of the highlights above and beyond what Kelly had to add. And I'm here, of course, always to answer any questions that you might have from our presentations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Laura?
The only question I have is going back to the traffic study.
Pull your mic up, Don.
Oh, sorry. Shoot me. The only question I have for Laura is the traffic study. It talks about additional 500 daily trips. This is just to me, but that seems like a lot of trips where those two streets dumping onto 12th Street.
Yeah, so how you determine that is a couple different studies. So you take a look at the Lebanon Transportation Plan, and they plan out where they need certain capacity streets, so how you're actually going to accommodate the traffic volume on these. So these are local streets. When you're taking a look at those number of trips, the local streets that will connect to the subdivision are actually built to serve this type of traffic volume, I guess is the shortest way to answer that. They built them for two-way traffic, onsite parking, pedestrian movements, and the like. Typically, like as I mentioned, for access by the Oregon Fire Code, you'd need two access. But by city code, the only standards that you're meeting is lot length and block length and perimeter length. And on these, you're not able to do it just because of how the existing development patterns here. So there could be potential for street access, but where existing residential development has already occurred prohibits the ability to make additional street connections on the site. And then the natural resources on the other side, I mean, you'd be building bridge and impacting a large riparian and wetland area to do any other sort of connections to Schultz. And even if those hurdles were able to be overcome, Schultz is a really high volume of roadway, so you wouldn't want to introduce traffic or access points to a high-volume roadway. You really want traffic to flow on the higher and disperse them to the local streets where traffic speeds are lower.
Right, but I think additionally, you're talking about when, as lots get developed, there'll be an extension probably going on to, is that Walker?
I believe it's Vaughn to the south.
Oh, sorry, Vaughn.
Yeah.
Walker's the other one.
Yeah, and you have to think of those trips. The numbers may sound high, but you're thinking just very intermittent trips throughout the day, delivery drivers, things of that nature. And really, this is at maximum buildout, so there's a potential that not all lots would be, for example, developed with a duplex. So there might actually end up being a lower volume of traffic. The really key numbers, I think, in my mind, are what those peak hours are going to be. So what does it look like at rush hour, at five o'clock at night? And how are those? And, I mean, essentially, you have 50 trips that could be split between two different roads, and you're, you're saying 25 trips, and those are spread out between your peak hour. So that results in maybe one car every couple of minutes that would be coming and going to the site.
Any other questions? Just more of an orientation question. Studying this, I was getting confused on what we're talking about, what's in, what's out. So when we're talking about the two tracks to the north, are we talking about parcel one, parcel two?
So there's no parcel, so we're taking a look at the entire site. And the entire site is essentially divided into 48 lots and three tracks. Two of those tracks are quite small. One's located to the north and just preserves the wetland area. So it's on the north of the, and when you're looking at this,
Okay.
it's tilted.
So when you're referring to the two tracks, you're talking about the two tracks that are being developed?
The tracks are set aside areas of land that are undeveloped. So they are just leftover pieces of area once you divide off the subdivision lots that are going to contain essentially natural resources or stormwater treatment.
Parcel one and parcel two on the map here is, it's outside Parcel one and parcel two on the map here is, it's outside of the subdivision area, but that's off the table. We're not talking about that at all.
Correct. That's not a part of the development.
So then, once the forty-eight lots are developed, if the subdivision is approved, the remaining eleven point eight acres, how is that identified?
So those will be identified on a survey as a track. Tracks are undeveloped portions of property.
And will it be a separate tax lot?
Not be, it, it could be a tax lot. Tax, tax lot's just where your tax bill goes. But in these instances, typically HOA or there's a private maintenance agreement that's established for those, that the residents that live within that subdivision take for the long-term care of those facilities. But in this instance, tracks would just be areas where you're not developing to preserve natural resources or to have stormwater detained onsite, so it doesn't flow.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is the remaining eleven point eight acres is non-buildable. And is it, who does it belong to? The HOA?
Yes.
Okay, so then the HOA is responsible, and I think there was a comment in here, responsible for taxes, for upkeep, for maintenance?
Yeah, so that gets into kind of the private side of development. So essentially, in short, an agreement is put in place that all the owners of the subdivision commit to when they buy a piece of property. And then usually, there's a funding mechanism that's tied to that, that people commit to pay X amount per month, per year, to maintain these features over the duration of, of the subdivision.
Okay. So is there anything that would stop the developer or the HOA sometime down the road of creating a separate tax lot that would be sellable to a buyer?
Kind of gets in the legal side of it. I'm not aware of that situation ever occurring. You know, I think these natural resources and these overlays are not likely to change. These are found in your long-term comprehensive plans, so they haven't changed in twenty years, and they, they're not anticipated. So I don't think development opportunity is going to open up into these areas where they'd be marked.
I'm not sure I've ever seen a parcel that large that was, that an HOA was responsible for.
Yeah.
It just seemed a little bit different.
Yeah, and some communities, the city takes over ownership of that. That was not something that was agreed about in this proposal, but sometimes those become part of the park system. And then city taxpayers would contribute to those instead of the private citizens. So there's different ways that those ownerships can go, but nothing would be dedicated to the city unless there was an agreement and something set aside. In this proposal, it's
If the city was interested in it.
Yeah, 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 which I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Usually, that's something we, we talk about before you put the subdivision proposal together, and that's included. In this one, it's intended to remain private.
Yeah, I guess my concern is that it'd just become this, you know, redheaded stepsister that sits out there and, can I say that? I probably should have said that.
Hard pass.
That just turns into this horrible mess.
Yeah, in this case, they're natural resources, so they're meant to be places that are not maintained, manicured. They're not supposed to be a manicured lawn. Oftentimes, people that border the property take some sort of ownership to that to make sure that, you know, nuisance weeds are maintained. But really, those provisions are spelled out into a private agreement. Sometimes they hire, you know, companies to maintain it, and that's part of the homeowners association fee mechanism. But all that's worked out at the private level with an agreement.
Okay. My concern similar to that is you got eleven point eight acres that's not defined as far as who's in control of it. That's a breeding ground for unauthorized camping and all kinds of things. And I'd be concerned if I bought one of those parcels and I've got a cluster of homeless people and yahoos that are, you know, encamped out my back door, and it's not my property. And, you know, who, who's going to have the authority to boot those people out or?
It would be defined who's in charge of it, though, with an HOA. So essentially, you would have all of the homeowners in that area responsible for making sure that doesn't happen. And I'd imagine that if you live there, you're going to be more on top of it. But that's just
In cases like that, when there's excess property or, or property that you have a concern like that, the HOA can actually provide the Lebanon Police with a trespass, trespass authority order, which means that they can, basically, if they see somebody on there, if they don't have written author, written permission or something else, then the Lebanon, you know, the Lebanon Police then don't, they don't have to go find an HOA representative to sign a trespass order or something like that. They have a standing order in place that gives the police the authority to enforce that as private property. We have that with a number of different businesses and property owners in town.
So do we know if there's a HOA that's been established or, or in the works to be established to, to govern this?
My guess is that's a private, that's more of a private issue that, I mean, not private, like nobody's going to know about it. It has to get recorded in the public records, but it may not have been even established yet. But somebody will have control of that property. And somebody
I think it was part of the application packet is that that was a requirement, right? That an HOA be formed, so that is part of this proposal.
Yeah, so, so currently, this is not even land, right? You're, you're working with one parcel. So to plat the lots and record the subdivision and actually create the tracks, when, when they're created, that agreement and maintenance agreement come into play. So it's not timely, I guess is the easiest way to say that. Once you have an approval, then you can seek out the advice of an attorney to craft those documents. And usually, those documents that are created to establish an HOA are recorded at the same time the subdivision is platted, or when those lots and tracks are actually created.
Okay.
I have a question, maybe just from my own education. But when you say the natural resources, is that the same as the wetlands essentially?
Yeah, it's a broad term to describe your floodplain areas, wetlands, your riparian in Oak Creek.
So in order for that to ever be developed, you'd have to do the credit system and buy credits and do that whole confusing thing.
Each, each overlay has different regulations, so, yeah. To build in a floodplain, you have to meet some floodplain requirements. But a lot of these natural resources are kind of, you can think of them as overlaid. So you can have a portion of a wetland that also has potential for flooding, that might also border a creek. So once you start to layer those up, it's difficult, if not impossible, and likely why it's set aside as a track and not retained as a parcel for future development.
Just one last question. Oak Creek is notorious for flooding during the winter. Now, I'm just a little bit concerned with that feeder street feeding back in to Vaughn. With, has anybody really addressed what's going to happen with that whole flooding issue? Because it seems like it happens every year.
In regard to, so are, are we concerned about it flooding? So if you look at where that's at, so that's the alignment of the West Side Interceptor, right there. Could there be flooding in there? Yeah. We'd have to look at that if, if that street was ever extended. You've got to have a willing property owner through there, too, to extend that street. There's a whole host of issues that could happen with extending that street with site distance because it ends up right there on the corner. So chances of it extending like that, maybe not.
Maybe not.
But we're not going to let them build a public roadway in a spot that's going to flood or permanently flood. That's, that's why we go through the engineering portion of it.
Laura, could you address the detention ponds in the flood zone? That's kind of unique. So I don't need to go into the deep science of it, but how's that work?
Well, I'm glad you're not going to go into deep science because I'm not the engineer on this project. I wouldn't give you the specifics on that. But essentially, they, they take and calculate how much detention area they're going to need to detain stormwater so that it can be slowly released back into the system so it doesn't cause any flooding in the area. When you look at overlay zones for floodplains, my understanding of those is that they're areas that have the potential to be flooded within a specific period of time. And those events are very, do not occur very often. And if they did, the whole area would be inundated with water regardless of your detention facilities.
So there's no concern in a flood event that it wouldn't do its job?
For failing, for, you'd have soap, you would have other water and dispersing in a manner that's not typical to the grading. I mean, I guess there's a few pieces that come into play. When you take a look at a site, you're going to grade it to drain to these detention facilities or to collect the stormwater when you're able to. So your first spot within a flooding event would start to fill up these detention facilities that are intended for that. And any sort of excess in that area would, would be likely contained within the floodplain that they have denoted based on historical events. I don't know if that specifically answers the question either, but you're going to have some collection of water within that area. It may exceed in some areas. It really just depends on that flooding event.
I know Ron wants to say something.
So does, does that answer, so, so we, we require a ten-year detention, right? So, yeah, we, everything is up to a ten-year storm event. After that, all bets are off, right? So what you're seeing up there, I believe, is the hundred-year floodplain? So you're looking at a hundred-year floodplain? At that point, no, the detention basins aren't going to work, but they're not designed or intended to work at that point anyway, so.
So just a normal event?
Just like all the other detention basins that we have, they're all designed to hold a ten-year storm event. If you get a hundred-year event, we don't, we couldn't design to that. If we did, it
All bets are off.
Were too flat.
Okay, got it. Okay. Another, this is more of a curiosity question. The overlay or overlap, I should say, of the two, of the two tracks, is there a significance to that?
Those areas? I guess I wasn't aware of an overlap on those.
The, will it be the south end of track one and the north end of track two?
The dotted lines that are just showing, so on the
No.
On the, the plans themselves, if you look further in the sheets, the dotted lines around those segments show a zoomed-in portion of that on a further page in, in the plans. And so the, the dotted line here
That look like a box. Those are actually callouts. So on different pages, you get a closer view of those sections. So because the subdivision is so long and there's so much area, those dashed lines that are in a kind of a box or rectangle shape, those denote areas that are on separate plans, show just those areas in a closer view. So they're not overlapping tracks. They're denoting, yeah.
Snapshots.
Yeah, there you go. That's a good way to explain it, yeah.
Okay.
Leave it to planners to use lots of extra words.
Yeah, yeah. Doing your job unless you add extra, right?
Okay, my final question, and I'll shut up. The floodplain permit that is necessary for development of those southern lots, how will that be conveyed to a potential buyer? And what is the impact to that buyer?
Yeah, so floodplain overlays, you can find that information readily available online through FEMA and also the city websites. So if you're doing any due diligence, that would come up. Often, those show up on a title report when you purchase a piece of property. As, as kind of put the potential future property owner on notice. And then also, as kind of the stopgap is when you're submitting a building permit to construct. That's part of the building permit review process. They would notify if the person is unaware of additional regulations. It would have to be reviewed in association with a, a site-specific development, a house.
Okay, so there at least be a recording of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Public recording?
Yep.
Okay. Right, I'm done.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else with us tonight that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no movement, is there anybody with us wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Okay, if you'd come forward, sign in, state your name, please.
My name My name is Michael McClanahan, and I live exactly adjacent to this property that's to be developed. And there's, there's, there's a lot of, that's, there's a lot of concern about the, the amount of lots and the traffic. Because I live on Fuji Lane, and it, on the north side of Fuji Lane, right next to that lot, but I cannot read it on what the number is on my paper here. But the Fuji Lane and Mazama are not, are not like wi, wide streets like Twelfth Street is that, that that runs into. And, and this map does not show on the other side where we're, where we're located, what it looks like. And, and, and if you could see that together with what they're proposing, is, is, it's a, it's a real bottleneck for this traffic. Because Fuji Lane after Twelfth Street is, is a cul-de-sac. Mazama does go through to Tenth and on, but only for like four blocks, I think. And, and, and my friend here, Jim, who lives on Fuji Lane also, that's what our main concern is, is, is the amount of lots, which has really, I don't know if you guys know a history of this, but they, they gave me an other map four years ago, and the floodplain is a lot bigger and there's a lot fewer lots. And just, and I'm just kind of curious how, how, who assesses, who decides how big the floodplain is and how big the wetlands are and all this? Because, you know, I, I've lived there thirteen years now, and it's, and that, those wetlands and floodplains seem the same to me. And then the other thing that issue that she didn't bring up is where my house sits, it's a four-foot drop-off to this lowland that they're proposing to build it. But will, will that have to be built up like it was where I, my lot is? And so on and so forth, you know? Exactly where my lot is, where that, where that lot is next to, you know, proposed, it's next to mine, is actually a retention pond right now. Where the, where the water from the streets goes right out of, from the end of the sidewalk, and it, and it makes its way into a pond, and then it trickles out, and there's like a, there's a tree line of ash trees along this line where it goes on out to the creek. So I, I just wanted to bring these, all this stuff to your, to your attention.
Okay.
Can you show Kelly on the map which, where your house is adjacent, please, so that she can show us?
Are you on the north side or are you on the south side?
Here, I'll put it.
I'm just trying to visualize.
On page three.
Yeah, he's actually going Fuji outside of this, man.
On this, page three of the
So the north side.
Assessment assessment, it shows the other side.
Talking about retention right here.
Okay. And so you're, you're saying there's a four-foot drop-off?
Oh, yeah, I have, I, I bought a rock wall to be placed there because when I bought my property, it was, it was the, what had, they had built up, they never put a, a wall or anything there. And it, it kept, when the rains came, it just kept washing away. So I, I built, I had a, a rock wall built. And it looks real nice.
So Mike, your concern with that four-foot drop is?
Well, you know, you guys should be concerned because, you know, this, this park that's goes south, that's actually a higher elevation than here by my house. That's, it's a higher elevation.
Okay.
And in that area where, where it goes down there towards Vaughn, that's a forest now.
Okay.
And it's a higher, it's definitely a higher elevation.
Okay.
This area, this, this area between Mazama and Fuji, this is all real low.
Okay, so we'll have the applicant address that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Okay. Seeing done, then we will give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal.
So I'm just up here to comment that there is elevation, our topography plans, existing conditions that are included in the packet. And then also on page 93 of the packet, if my numbers are correct, it does show where proposed grading will occur on the site. So in areas that are not impacted by natural resources and actually consist of proposed streets and lots, there will be onsite grading that occurs to make sure that storm water, for example, can flow in the proper directions and go the directions that it needs to go. So at that point in time, and construction plans are developed, this will be reviewed in even greater depth by the engineers, and onsite grading will occur to help mitigate any of those sorts of issues that you're not having standing water or drainage from this site affect abutting property owners. In terms of the street system, most of us are from this community, so you're probably aware, and this particular area is not a traditional grid-style street. So there is some areas that would connect straight from the proposed subdivision to the east, trying to look at a map at the same time, that would provide connections to both 12th and 10th, which are north-south right-of-way. And then Fuji Lane, if you would continue that further to the east, it actually intersects with 12th Street, and then it continues onto a cul-de-sac. So on Fuji, the likely travel from the site would be to east, and then you'd either take a right or left, or go north or south on 12th Street and connect to the larger street system. So on those, they're not bottlenecks, it's not a true grid, but there is a pattern that would be able to disperse traffic without directing it any one particular way and creating any sort of traffic conflicts.
With respect to the wetlands area, I assume that the applicant or somebody that had the property got a delineation from the Department of State Lands with respect to the identified wetlands or unavailable?
Yeah, so in regards to that comment, cyan, or wetland delineation, there's actually a map that is included in your packet that shows where those boundaries are. And again, if there's any potential for removing or fill in those particular areas, that would go through a state permitting system, where they would review those. So in addition to review here at the local body by your city staff, they're also reviewed by state employees that specialize in reviewing wetland permits to make sure that those are done properly. With that, that's all the rebuttal I have. Did you guys have a quick additional questions for me?
Is there any other questions?
Okay.
So just one for clarity. He mentioned that he had a map that showed a different zoning or a different area. Does that change periodically?
I took a quick look at it before I sat down here. I can tell you what I think it is, and then he could probably clarify if you needed to. But typical, when you're looking at maps and wetland issues, the biggest discrepancy I think folks see is that you have a city GIS mapping system, and they take a look at the city on a kind of far-back scale. They actually don't get on private property to mark where wetlands in, are. So when you're looking at a map that's provided on your city website, or even the national wetland inventory, these are based off of aerial image and data, so they're approximate boundaries of where these wetlands are. So when you're developing a particular site, that's why you bring in a wetland consultant, because they're actually folks that get on the ground and can take a look at the plants, the soil types, and things of that nature, to say exactly where the boundaries of these wetlands are on the site. So the map that he's probably referring to or looking at could be one of those pulled-back, further-away views that wasn't based on site-specific information. But the wetland delineation in the packet is recent and has the best ability to delineate or mark where those wetlands exist onsite.
Okay.
And there was a letter from the state as well approving the delineations.
Yeah, 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 that's good to point out. They do take a look at the wetland consultant's information and see if they concur with that, if they agree or disagree with it. And in this case, they agree that that is correct.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, then, we will close the public hearing process. We can't take any more testimony. I'm sorry, Mike, we can't take any more testimony. You can, you can visit if you want, but law prohibits us from taking additional. So with that, then, we'll close the public testimony portion. All further discussion will be amongst planning commissioners and staff. Any concerns? We've had a lot of testimony, a lot of information. This is a little bit complicated. I think, just to throw it on the table, my biggest concern is throwing the responsibility of maintaining that additional 11.8 acres onto the property owners. I wish there was a solution for that, and maybe there is that we don't know about.
I agree with you, Don. That is very concerning. Just because it's so large.
Yeah.
It essentially could be a large expense for the HOA.
Yeah, it'd be a burden.
And if there's any damage from flooding or anything else, is the HOA responsible for that as well, as far as, you know, if trees come down, or, you know, that kind of thing? Are the homeowners now responsible for all of that? So, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know if it's on. I mean, each HOA can be different. I think it would be unlikely that the HOA would be responsible for injury like that, because each property owner will have their own insurance or have their own liability as it relates to those. If there was injury caused by a tree or property that, from another piece of property, then you're looking at that insurance company or that property to be liable. Your question isn't if there was, if there was damages coming from that 11 acres of undeveloped property?
Well, if it's undeveloped and there's a windstorm, or there's flooding, or whatever, there's downed trees, there's damage, you know, to the property, does it just stay damaged? Or does it just, I mean, who's responsible for that? And that's such a large piece of property, is that an additional expense?
My guess is, and I don't know for sure, is that the HOA itself will have an insurance policy.
Oh, okay.
That would be most likely, because they're not going to have property that they own without insurance.
Okay.
That's just, they better not.
That makes sense. I guess I didn't think about having insurance on empty property.
If I may as well, the property as it sits today is exactly as the property is going to sit after the subdivision, where the vacant land would sit right now, right? So the excess land is the creek, the floodplain, the wetlands area, and the natural resource area as it currently looks right now, right? And so during a wind event right now, if a tree falls and it starts to block the creek, they're going to get a call from the city to say, you're causing flooding because of damage in the creek bed area, and that needs to be fixed and that kind of thing. But it's a natural vegetation area, and so the only real improvement within that area would be the fire access lane, which they'll have to maintain. The rest of it sort of sits as, what you see right now is what you're going to see 20 years from now, just with homes closer to it. So it's the same situation as it sits.
So I understand that the goal of a natural area is to leave it natural. So you wouldn't be mowing it, you wouldn't be cutting down trees, so on and so forth. I get that. I do have a concern about that large of an area potentially becoming overgrown and a large fire hazard. And I could see there being a need for some kind of fire break, some sort of area that's, you know, mowed or something to keep fire danger away from the homes and other surrounding things. I don't know what all else is around that particular parcel, but that's a concern. I think that needs to be looked at at some point by the HOA or whoever.
The Lebanon Fire District will be reviewing the plans and reviewing the development proposals, and they have a standard condition that says that any development proposal is required to meet the fire code. And so if there is a required fire break, if there is a required maintenance of vegetation, where there is a property and wildfire and wildlife interface, the Fire District has policies and standards of how those are to be maintained. And that would be under their jurisdiction to identify what they would want to do.
Just to throw out a real radical idea, is there any reason why that excess property couldn't be Lot 49? And relieve the subdivision of the maintenance responsibilities? Because in Lebanon, anything over 12 inches tall has to be mowed.
I don't, in that area, I, in that area where the trees are at, we were looking at the property on the other side of the creek to purchase for habitat. It was offered to us. We went through the same thing with the wetlands delineation, and we had somebody come out and walk all of that. It's pretty wet in there. There's not really a lot of tall grass, per se, and there's lots of low-lying vegetation in there that's, it's fairly wet, right? I think I remember that from the reports, Mike. And there's lots of critters in there. There's lots of different kinds of species of things in there that they showed us. So as far as a fire hazard back in that area, unless the trees are really
Yeah, I'm not thinking so much of fire hazard, I am just maintenance responsibility, the burden.
What's the advantage of having a single or having a separate lot that you envision?
Then it's sellable.
But it's not really.
It's not.
Well, it doesn't have to be buildable.
It's more of a liability than it is an asset.
So right now, as it's proposed, it's proposed as a tract associated with the homeowner subdivision, right? So a homeowners' association is going to be formed, the homeowners are going to be informed as part of the purchase of their property that they are going to be part of this association, and what the maintenance requirements are going to be needed. So they get to go in with eyes wide open. Creating it as a Lot 49, you're leaving it as an unbuildable parcel, because there's no area that's not under the BPA easements, a waterline easement, the fire access line, the floodplain, or wetland area. So there's really no buildable area of that, so then it's creating no value.
But that
So you're creating a position where the developer holds on to a property of zero value.
That in and of itself is not uncommon. I mean, there's a lot of parcels that are unbuildable. I'm just, my whole goal here is relieving the burden of maintenance and upkeep from those other 48 owners.
But then who, at that point, would maintain the liability and the upkeep?
I know it's wet, and it may or may not be farmable. I don't know.
It's not.
I've been on that property in the summer, it's dry in the summer, but it's not the rest of the year, I understand. I just, like I say, I'm just throwing out ideas here, and I may not even agree with it, I'm just looking for something that would relieve that burden.
Couldn't one of
Had that before, where we've ended up a separate lot in a subdivision like that that was either designed for a detention basin, or whatever it was, that was supposed to be part of the subdivision, and with it not being attached to the subdivision, they just didn't pay the taxes, and we got it. So I would be cautious of that.
So they were suggesting that the city take it anywhere?
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking, because I really don't know. Couldn't one of those lots just include that wetland, and they would have the 11.12 acres, whatever, you know, that's up there? Then you have a buildable home, and they have the 11.88 acres to use for whatever.
So then you're providing a single homeowner the entire responsibility of that large lot in exchange for 48 homeowners combining the responsibility of it?
Well, they would be buying it, knowing that they were responsible for it. I don't know.
So I would say there's actually a statute that addresses a lot of this on homeowners' associations and the requirements that they have when they're formed, and the obligations and the requirements. And I've never read it before, but I'm reading it now. Well, I've never formed an HOA, I don't know it.
Yeah.
I know, I knew just enough to get by. But, I mean, it's addressing, actually, it says that they are responsible for a lot of the things that you're talking about, common property, matters relating to affecting lots of interest in the owners, including, but not limited to, damage, destruction, impairment, or loss of use of a lot or portion thereof. And so I think that, I think the legislature has thought through a lot of this and made sure that the HOA agreement is going to not leave any holes as it relates to governance or liability, or some of the issues that I think you guys are discussing. And again, it's a very long statute, so I haven't read through all of it. If anyone wants to read it, it's 94, 630.
So there's really three options, or four if you want to use Commissioner Loy's option. Option number one is it's remained as a tract as part of the HOA as it sits, and it's a shared responsibility for the HOA. Option number two, it's turned into a 49th lot, which then is ultimately non-sellable, so the developer maintains ownership of it and then has no use for it whatsoever. And then they maintain a liability for an area that they're not going to be utilizing in perpetuity. Option number three, it's dedicated to the city, which for the record is not an option. Or option number four is it's combined into a single lot, which then puts it as single property owner ownership. And so realistically, it feels weird, because it's such a large lot, and it's a natural area, that's a natural habitat, that's not traditionally maintained. But it is the status quo, and you are purchasing into a homeowners' association that has the knowledge that that's theirs. And you need that lot for your access anyway, for your emergency fire access, and so that's a shared lot for the homeowners' association.
So I might disagree on one item.
That's right.
It's actually not non-sellable. You can sell anything, but it is non-buildable.
Thank you for the correction.
I wouldn't take it for a dollar.
Not attractive.
I would.
Not an attractive lot.
As your attorney, I wouldn't advise it.
Okay, so, any other thoughts? You heard four different options. Option one is the way it was presented. Is, are you comfortable with that? I see one head nodding.
And I'd like to clarify, too. Option one is the option that's being proposed by the developer. That's what's being presented before the planning commission for consideration, and so the planning commission can request the developer to reconsider it, but is, that would be a request to the developer. It's not something that we would necessarily automatically choose to condition, because then how does it meet the decision criteria to condition that way? Just an aside.
Okay.
Unless the attorney wants to correct me on that, too.
So Don, I just, one more comment about it. Having the ownership spread through an HOA throughout all of the, sorry, all of the 48 lots, may mean that there's a little bit of money that's involved in paying towards that, but then they all take ownership in that 11.8 acres. Keeping it clean, keeping people out of there, so that the wetlands are maintained and the species can grow and things like it is now. It's a beautiful place if you grow down in through there in those trees, but it gives those people with HOA that they have to pay into it to actually take care of and have ownership in that piece of property to maintain that. And not wish it upon somebody else to, you know, and then complain about it, because it's not being done. I mean, I don't, I think that they should have to help with some of that.
Would there be anything that would keep the HOA from creating trails and things for the homeowners to enjoy that property? Or with it being wetlands, are they not allowed to have
It would just be whatever DSL would allow. They would govern the area if it's actually a wetland.
DSL and a floodplain permit would be required.
Oh, okay.
Really, in my experience, the bottom line is, if a buyer is educated as to what their responsibilities are and they choose to do it, so be it. So are we comfortable moving forward?
Yes, I'm comfortable, but I accept a transportation assessment, you know, and I appreciate what Laura had to say, but I still think 500 tri, I mean, I'm just concerned with 500 trips a day on two roads. I'm uncomfortable with that. I realize there's nothing I can do with about it, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that.
Okay. Anybody else have that concern?
Laura did, though, say that at peak times it was 50...
37 and 50. 50 in the PM and 30...
So then the rest would be, like, spread throughout the day?
Right.
Amazon, those kinds of things.
Yeah. 500 trips is 500 trips.
Yeah.
And most of that traffic is probably going to go out 12th to Walker and then out to Stoltz Hill because most people are going to be traveling out to the main roads. So I think that Walker and 12th to the north are going to get the bulk of that 500.
Okay. So is there a concern to the point that you would like to make a suggestion or solution?
Boy, I don't have a solution. I wish I did.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment on that? Okay. Any other concerns? All right, so then the question, do you feel that the criteria has been met by the applicant? Kind of moving away from any adjustments more to the criteria, do you feel it has been satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. Most heads are nodding yes. You okay, Laura?
Yes.
Then is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I move that the planning commission approve the proposed subdivision S-22-04, adopting the written findings contained in the staff report with the conditions of development and direct staff to draft an order of decision incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those then in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving on then to our second public hearing. Planning File A-23-02, any ex parte contact conflict of interest or bias? Seeing none, and the legal...
Just the important part here. Recognize that since there still is somebody in the audience that may testify, please recognize that all testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed condition of approval, if any accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes any appeal to the land support of appeals. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba shall be raised not later than the close of the record or the following this evidentiary hearings, hearing.
Okay, thank you. So we've already gone through the ex parte, that part of thing. I'll send it to staff.
Hi. So before you tonight, is proposed annexation of a property on South 12th Street, just north of F Street, on the west side of the street. The comprehensive plan designation is mixed use, and the assigned zoning upon annexation is mixed use, and the applicant has accepted the initial zoning designation, which means that no additional studies were required for our facility's master plan to accommodate a change in the zone. Surrounding the property is a mixture of properties within and outside of city limits that are designated by the comp plan and zoning as a mixed use, which include agricultural and single-family dwelling developments as it sits today. And then to the east and south are property within the residential mixed density zone and has, and mixed use zone and is either vacant land or is improved with like a memory care and a vehicle towing yard. The property is contiguous to city boundaries on the north and east side and are able to be serviced by public utilities as there are existing facilities within South 12th Street that could be connected to. And so based off of that criteria and what has been established within the staff reports, that will conclude my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
The blue on your screen is much smaller than the blue on my screen. So are we talking about the whole red area, or are we talking about...
We are talking about the tiny little blue that you have on your screen. I believe it's only 1.21 acres that is proposed to be annexed. The property recently went through, on the county side, a partition to partition off this area, and the maps haven't been updated fully yet. And so per our system, it's inclusive of the entire property for notification purposes. But the only area that's annexed is 1.21 acres on, right along the street frontage.
So our, okay, we have a picture of the complete...
Yeah, I was actually confused by that, too, because in the public notice, that's a much larger property.
So that's not it. It's the...
It's just the little teeny tiny.
Yeah, there's an exhibit provided with the legal description and the legal map that shows the meets and bounds of the total 1.21 acres. So it's just the area along the frontage of 12th.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then we will open the public hearing, and we have our applicants represented who are at the table. You're on.
So I don't have a lot to add to this one. I'll just point out that the exhibit is found on page 123 of the application, and I have it pulled up if you want me to just pass it around quickly so you can take a look at it. That's the one. Yeah.
Yep.
So the ones being shown up, it's the hashed area that shows 1.21 acres. That's the only section proposed for annexation at this time. With that, I don't have anything to add, but I'm available for questions if you have them.
Okay, any questions for Laura? All right, thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing none, then the public testimony portion of the hearing will be closed. All further discussion amongst planning commissioners and staff. So now that we have a identity of the 1.21 acres, any concerns? Okay, do you feel that the application has met the criteria? Okay, then anybody prepared to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the annexation A-23-02 to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report and direct the staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all those then in favor of the act, of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Then moving on to our final public hearing, A-23-03, any ex parte contact conflict of interest or bias? And I'm assuming your disclosure would apply to this one also.
It does, and I'm going to do it even more abbreviated. I would deem that it'd be read into the record, the same provisions that I read at the previous hearing, unless there's an objection by anybody in the audience. Make everybody understands.
Okay. All right, then moving on to the staff report.
Good evening again. Before you, is a proposed annexation on the other side of 12th Streets, just south of F Streets. It's about 1.65 acres, I believe, if I'm remembering this right. No, that was totally wrong. Excuse me. 0.62 acres, remove the one, of land that is currently designated in the comprehensive plan as residential mixed density, and the assigned zoning upon initial annexation is also residential mixed density, and the applicant is accepting of the initial zoning. Surrounding the properties on the north, south, and east side are residential uses in the mix of county and city land with the designation of residential mixed density. And then to the west is zoned mixed use, but it's currently vacant in agricultural uses. The city is contiguous to this property on the north side and the south side, and there are public utilities that are available in South 12th Street that can be connected to this property for utility connection, so that meets the criteria, generally speaking, for an annexation. We did receive one comment letter on this annexation, which we provided to the planning commission as well as city's response to the comment letter. And so unless there is any desire for staff to summarize that comment letter, that is included as part of the record and able to be discussed by the planning commission. And so outside of that, I'll conclude my report.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I need to back up just a little bit. I probably should disclose for the record that the property immediately to the west across the street, I am a trustee in the ownership of that property. Across the street, so west of this property. So it would have no impact on my decision-making, but it probably should be on the record.
And let me follow up with one question. Is the approval or denial of this request in any way affect your value or your potential use of your property?
Does not. Okay. Oh, I guess I need to open the hearing, don't I? So let's open up the public testimony portion. Our representative is at the table, and you're on.
Great, thank you. Laura LaRocque with Udel Engineering, representing the applicant on this one. And again, I do not have anything further to add but available for questions. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Again, anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no movement, then this public testimony portion will be closed. All further discussion amongst planning commissioners and staff. Any concerns whatsoever? Pretty straightforward. This one has, does have a house on it. Okay, you feel the criteria has been met? Heads are nodding yes. All right, anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion again. I move that the planning commission, or for file number A-2303, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the annexation A-23-03 to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report and direct the staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Okay, and you seconded? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all those then in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Moving on, commission business and comments.
A couple of updates for me. We had originally had a special meeting with the planning commission scheduled for next Wednesday. Due to some scheduling adjustments and shifts around at City Hall, we will not need to do the special meeting. We will be able to host the regular August meeting. And so the items that were originally scheduled as part of the special meeting will be presented at the August meeting. We are in the process of finalizing all of those documents we've been working on, which is what August will be about. And as part of that, we are now going to be applying for a Department of Land Conservation and Development grant to start doing the work from all of our talking. And so the city council at their last meeting has approved this middle of that application, which we will do by the end of this month, and work is anticipated to start upon grant approval probably February of next year. So take a very short breath, and then we're going to start all over again. And then for those that don't know, Ron is at this point in time our acting in charge city manager, and we have a city council meeting scheduled for tomorrow to discuss that further. So those are all my updates at this point.
Okay. Anything else from the commission?
Good to see the air conditioner finally started working.
Yeah, it got hot in here for a little bit. All right, if there's no other comments, no other business, this meeting is adjourned.